September 24th, 2024, meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. City Clerk, if you could please take the role.
Larson.
Here.
Esslinger.
Here.
Flom.
Here.
Bulow.
Here.
Stevenson.
Here.
Councilmember Nichols is absent, excused, Mugawar.
Here.
Six present.
Leading us in the invocation tonight will be Councilmember Larson, and then we have students from Lourdes Academy here to help us with the pledge.
Great. We ask for guidance tonight as we begin this meeting. May all those who participate in our discussions and our decisions reflect the values that we cherish in this great city.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undebowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, this evening, we have two students from Lourdes High School with us. We have Ding Machirios and Naima Koldi. I hope I got those close. Good. Thank you again for coming and helping us with the pledge tonight. We greatly appreciate your help. I'll give you the microphone if you want. If you want to give us maybe your favorite teacher, favorite subject over there at Lourdes.
Hi, my name is Ding. My favorite teacher is Ms. Sayed. She shaped me to be a greater person, and I appreciate her for that. And my favorite subject is, I think you can learn a lot from it.
Hi, I'm Naima, and Mr. Michael is the teacher I choose because he gave me this wonderful opportunity to come here tonight. So, yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you again, both of you. Have a great night. Next up, we have introduction of staff. Ms. Nyforth.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody. I'd like to introduce Sarah Rakowski, our new Assistant Community Development Director. We're very excited to have Sarah on board. Sarah comes to us from the city of Berlin, where she was the city administrator. So Sarah has a nice wide range of knowledge of all the different components of city government. So we're excited to have her on second floor in community development. Sarah will be working with all of our divisions and really jumping into a lot of projects, our housing projects that we have going on, our RDA projects, economic development, and some grants that we have out there. So really excited to have Sarah on board. Sarah, did you want to say anything?
When Kelly said jumping in, she meant jumping in, and I'm just really excited to be here. Thank you.
Well, welcome, and congratulations on the new role. We're happy to have you. Next up, we have one proclamation that was issued. I think Judy Britton, Carleen Christensen, and Judy Ritchie might be here this evening. Am I right on that? Come on up. I only knew three of you were coming. There's a fourth theme I missed, though.
Ellen Anderson.
Ellen Anderson?
She was coming.
Well, that's all right. We've got plenty of room, so welcome. Tonight's proclamation is to the Altrusa International of Oshkosh. Whereas, Altrusa International of Oshkosh was chartered October 1st, 1949, and will celebrate 75 years of service to the city of Oshkosh on October 1st, 2024, and promotes personal growth, community involvement, positive energy. And whereas, Oshkosh Altrusa was instrumental in the development of the Winbago Area Literacy Council, recently provided a substantial donation to their endowment fund, promotes literacy and education with scholarships, and Reed Elementary's new playground, which is fantastic, by the way, if you haven't seen that. Whereas, Oshkosh Altrusa received a community partner award from the city of Oshkosh for their significant contributions to the city, including spearheading fundraising campaigns to provide the fire department with life-saving AEDs, thermal imaging cameras, and Lucas Heart Compression Machines. And whereas, Oshkosh Altrusa provided funds, namely the Oshkosh Police Department, to purchase a high-resolution camera to document abuse and other injuries, supplies for the community crisis closet, as well as K-9 officer Odin. And whereas, Oshkosh Altrusa provided a significant donation for the Eagle exhibit at Menominee Park. And whereas, Altrusans provide a vast array of support and activities for the benefit of the community by sitting on boards and commissions for the city, local businesses, and nonprofits, selflessly investing themselves for the betterment of our community. Now therefore, I am at Mugawar, Mayor of the city of Oshkosh, to hereby proclaim October 1st, 2024, as Altrusa Day in the city of Oshkosh. And I have the microphone for a few moments for one of you or two of you, if you want. If you want to tell us about your work.
Thank you. Thank you. As has been announced, 75 years of providing services to the city, to the county, actually, to nonprofits and various programs, in a wide array. So it goes everything from children, to older adults, to everything and anything in the community. And it's really a privilege to be able to work with the city and the residents to make this, and having lived here for most of my life, a better community. And each day, and yes, we hear a lot of bad news, but more often, there's the good news out there that really needs to be spread, and that's what we're hoping to do.
I would just like to say that we're honored to be able to be here for the organization for 75 years, and also that we're very, very honored to be able to do the things that we do in this community to make it a better community. Thank you. Without all of you, we couldn't do it. So thank you.
Well, thank you again for all you do to make Oshkosh a better place, as well as all the service clubs here in Oshkosh and the greater Oshkosh community, but congratulations on 75 years. It's an incredible accomplishment.
Thank you.
Citizen statements. I don't have anyone registered under citizen statements. Is there anyone here that wants to speak to us that has not registered? I don't see anyone. We'll move on to consent. I also don't have anyone registered under consent. Is there anyone that is here who'd like to speak to us on any of the consent agenda items? All right. I'll take a motion and a second on consent.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on any items? I have one, actually. Is Mr. Fitzpatrick back there still, or not really? I should have given him a heads up. I'll drag it out. Number 24-508, just a comment on it. Renewal of the employee health and dental insurance for 2025, not the hottest of items for most folks. But health insurance costs for our city employees are only going up 1.6% for 2025. That's a huge accomplishment, and most of that is due to the city staff members and their families making great healthcare choices, using our partnership with the school district and the county and our Three Waves Clinic. All those things help drive healthcare costs down. We're coming into a tight budget, every year's a tight budget. This one is a little different, a little extra special, I think, with some of the other things going on, and that we were able to get that low of an increase is saying a lot about not only our HR department, but our staff and the usage of healthcare. So I just wanted to point that out. I was hoping to give Mr. Fitzpatrick a moment to get in here if he wanted to chime in, but...
But then he would talk.
But then he would talk, so we could probably move on. If there's no other comments, if you want to take the role on consent.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Bulow.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried six.
Next up, we have a reconsidered ordinance. This is ordinance 24-518 to approve a zone change from Institutional District and Single Family Residential 9 District to Institutional District with a planned development overlay at 108 West New York Avenue and property located at southeast corner of West Custer Avenue and Kentucky Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Procedurally wise, do the reconsideration first, then have people talk, and then we do our motion, or have them talk first? Reconsider first?
I would do the reconsideration first, because if it doesn't pass...
They can't talk about it. Okay. So in light of that, I need a motion to reconsider ordinance 24-518.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to reconsider the previous action? There's no discussion. If you'll take the vote on the motion to reconsider 24-518.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Bulow.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried six.
So then, what we will have is, I do have Mr. James Foykes. I don't want to mispronounce it too bad, from the Oshkosh Area School District. You're registered to speak. If you'd like to come on up, if you have anything you want to chat with us about, otherwise we'll put it on the floor and then have a discussion.
Yes, thank you. It's actually Fox. I appreciate that.
Sorry.
Actually, I am here as a representative of Oshkosh Area Schools, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have with regard to reconsideration of this ordinance.
Okay. If you want to stick around, we may have one or two. I don't know. Sounds good. So then I'll take a motion and a second on ordinance 24-518. This is approved zone change from Institutional District and Single Family District 9, Single Family Residential 9 District, to an Institutional District with a planned development overlay at 108 West New York Avenue and property located at southeast corner of West Custer Avenue and Kentucky Street, and Plan Commission recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yeah, I guess since I brought it back, I just wanted to give a little bit of background on this one. So originally, I did vote no against this rezoning, and I want to just have a point of clarity. I know we've had some talking about Merrill versus track or no Merrill. This rezone is just that. It's just looking at a use on the property. When I denied it originally, I didn't like the use and how it kind of played with the neighborhood. I think this new site plan that comes back that increases landscaping, reduces fencing requirements, and gets rid of a few of those base standard modifications that we had to do on that original plan, I think make the use now more palatable in that area. Again, so we are specifically looking at a rezoning. We're specifically looking at how does that use play into the neighborhood, play into that site. We're not looking at what our preferred use is. If somebody asked me if I wanted to keep Merrill, I think many people know that I would say 100% yes. But in the presence of this rezoning right here, do I think this, the athletic facility can work in this area? I also think yes with the changes that have been made. My ultimate goal was for this facility to be both a boon for the kids and for the neighborhood. We do need green space in the central city. I want to make sure and be very clear that this is going to be more of a public space. I do have some additional things and questions with the site plan as it comes down later down the line, but again, I just wanted to kind of put us on track here that we are just talking about a use change. Merrill could very well stay if we approved this, or it could get demolished. The school district is the property owner of that parcel, and we do not control whether or not a building gets knocked over or not. So I guess those are my points.
Sounds good. Councilmember Flom will be up next. I should have also briefly stated before I put it open for discussion, a reminder that in front of us is just the zone change tonight on 24-518. Discussion about the specifics of what their new plan calls for will be under the other action item, just to keep our comments to what's in front of us at the moment. Councilmember Flom.
So I'd like to kind of echo Councilmember Stevenson's points about this. In terms of the zone change itself, the frustrations that I voiced the prior meeting along with my vote kind of were, you know, a reflection of the community's attitude towards this. But given the fact that this is, you know, simply a zone change, I'm okay with this at this time. I have some other comments about the site, but I will wait until we arrive at there. So I just wanted to clarify in terms of my reasoning for this vote. Thanks.
Councilmember Esslinger.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to remain consistent with my vote as I did last time. It's been two weeks since the council looked at this. Nothing substantially has changed. I sent off an email to the staff asking what has changed with this new proposal, and literally a couple trees have been added to the landscaping plan, which is, I don't even know why it's coming back, but that's a whole other story. There's just too much to lose here. We've gone over this about housing. Hopefully, if this is voted no, the school district would maybe relook at this. I know there's been developers that wanted to redevelop this into housing, which we desperately need. We cannot, the taxpayers cannot afford $900,000 demolishing this, paying $1.9 million to create this, whatever they want to put here, athletic facility. So, and it's going to sit there unused 95% of the time. It's going to remain off the tax rolls. We could add millions of dollars of assessed value, something we also desperately need here. So again, I'm just going to remain consistent and hope that that could be reconsidered into housing for the city of Oshkosh. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers wish to speak on the topic? I see none. If you'll take the role on 24-518.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
No.
Flom.
Aye.
Bulow.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried 5-1.
Moving on, we have pending ordinance, yep, pending ordinance 24-519. Let's amend Section 27A-8 of the municipal code pertaining to through-street designation Scott Avenue. Transportation Committee recommends approval. I don't have anyone registered on this one. I'll take a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? I have one comment to add. This is one where for anybody not privy to, or not looking at the information we have in front of us, there's a spot on Scott Street that has received some property damage over the years due to drivers driving into their front yard, basically. And while this is not exactly what the applicant or that resident is asking for, it's a step in that direction. My comments are basically that this is a way for us to try to make that property a little safer, and that council's listening, Transportation Committee is listening to the concerns of our residents. This is one of those times this came right from a resident, looking to make sure that their property is a little safer, their neighborhood's a little safer, and went through the right process, and we're taking the right steps to try to help do that. So I just wanted to add what we're doing here with Scott Street, and really, all this is adding a stop sign, but it's the first step, and hopefully it helps. If there's no comments beyond mine, if you'll take the role on 24-519.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Bulow.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried six.
We have about a half dozen new ordinances. No anticipated action on any of these this evening, but I'll read through them the first time tonight, and then they'll come back for further discussion and a vote at the next council meeting. And if there's any council discussions, let's hit your button along the way if you have any questions. Ordinance 24-520, amend Section 27A-8 and 27A-10 of the municipal code to designate West 12th Avenue as a through-street at the intersection of 12th Ave. and Minnesota Street. Transportation Committee recommends approval. Ordinance 24-521, amend Section 27A-11 of the municipal code to remove a bus-loading zone on Hazel Street and a handicap parking area on Melvin Avenue due to relocation of the school facilities in and around the new Menominee Elementary School site. Transportation Committee recommends approval. Ordinance 24-522, amend Section 27A-11 of the municipal code to change no parking restrictions on Algoma Boulevard in front of the University of Wisconsin-Oshkosh Albey Hall. From no parking to 60-minute parking, Transportation Committee recommends approval. Ordinance 24-523, amend Section 27A-11 of the municipal code. Update parking regulations on Nebraska Street and 10th Avenue adjacent to Grace Lutheran Church and School. Transportation Committee recommends approval. Ordinance 24-524, adopt parking lot maps and associated regulations with Appendix 27B of the municipal code for the rec. department, Grand South, and 200 West parking lots. Transportation Committee recommends approval. Councilmember Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Director Collins, I don't know if we need you for this one, but this is something you and I talked about when the lease spaces first showed up downtown. And maybe this is not possible, so you can correct me if it is impossible. My hopes would be that as those lease spaces get more use and the permit spaces get more use, and with enforcement came people using those spaces in the right manner, right? That was the whole point. My hopes had always been that you and your department could make those changes within your own purview without bringing minimal changes to council every time you need to do that, because I, for one, trust you to do that. That's your job. That's why you're good at it. That's why you have a committee and a board to do it. But if it's not possible, I see you looking at me like it's not possible.
I'll let the attorney Lawrence say that. We did discuss it, and the Transportation Committee seems to be okay with it, but I talked to the city attorney about it.
It is an ordinance that if you want it to be enforceable and be an ordinance, it should go through council and go through those processes and essentially the steps to make it an enforceable ordinance. By changing it, you could create problems with our enforcement abilities.
I get all that. I'm just talking about if Jim sees the need to make two more lease spaces, which is what we're talking about, versus two more permit spaces, that seems like an awful lot of work and time and effort just to go through that whole process with your board then bring it to us, just to talk about changing the use of three stalls.
And if you, if someone doesn't abide by it, and we would want to issue a parking citation for not following the rules, that's where the issue comes into play, where we haven't gone through that process to make it a formal ordinance change by just having a staff member changing it.
Okay.
That's my concern.
I get it.
Yeah.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yeah, and I guess just off of that, so ordinance is going to only be approved by council, right?
Correct.
A committee and a staff person can't. So that's the rationale behind.
Correct.
Sure.
If there's nothing else on 24-524, I'll move on. Ordinance 24-525, approve zone change from Neighborhood Mixed Use District to Neighborhood Mixed Use District with a planned development overlay at 1700 Oregon Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Again, those last six will come back at the next council meeting for action. On to new resolutions. I do have two. What do I have? I have one person registered to speak on this one. Resolution 24-526, approve general development plan and specific implementation plan for athletics facility at 108 West New York Avenue and property located at southeast corner of West Custer Avenue and Kentucky Street. Mr. Jim Fox, if you have anything specific you want to share, otherwise, we can always call you up for questions if that's what you're, if you want, the floor is yours if you'd like it, I should say. Yeah. Welcome.
Appreciate it. Just a couple of quick comments. I just want to reiterate that this is not just an athletic site. This is a site specifically for the students of Vell Phillips Middle School. So this is a site where we expect to see them, you know, all throughout the day for FIAD classes. This is a site that they can utilize at lunchtime. This is certainly a site that we can utilize after school for track, and we may be able to host some other middle schools that don't have that particular land amenity to be able to practice track, you know, practice various aspects of track as well. So we consider that critical, and the fact that we have a difficult time being able to get the middle school students to the high school tracks, given the amount of different athletics that they have on their turf and fields, as well as the different sports that they're trying to host. So again, this is trying to help those feeder schools as well. We also just share with you tonight a little bit of clarity on the memorial corner. I don't know if there's not been a lot of conversation, but on that far southeast corner, there is a memorial corner memorializing James Merrill, Henry Aller, as well as Harold Schumert. We did pull down two piers that were dedicated to the design of Schumert Field back from the early 1930s, and we did save those, and those are all being reinstated as part of the design of that corner. We did share, again, a tentative plan. I want to, I just want to restate that any information you receive tonight with regard to that memorial is very preliminary, pending shipful approval at the state level, but we felt it was important that you're able to see the architecture and, you know, the commitment that we're making to kind of recognize the value of Merrill and how it played an important key in the city of Oshkosh. So unless there's any other questions you may make this time.
Sounds good. I will take a motion and a second on Resolution 24-526.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Stevenson, followed by Deputy Mayor.
So I would like to propose an amendment to the GDP and SIP just because of the nature of that monument space down there. I think we kind of indicated that that is kind of up in flux right now. I'd like that to come back as a, like a site plan by itself for review.
Is that a motion right away, or are you...
I guess I'm clarifying with staff that, does that motion sound okay?
Yeah, so since this area has not been finalized, and it is part of the GDP SIP, that could be a condition that you could place on the SIP for it to come back. Once they receive all the approvals they need, they would have to come back. So that would be, I guess, my question. You would like it to come back at council level, Plan Commission, staff?
Yeah, so, and that's where I, I'd like it to come back to council and go through the Plan Commission process, but I guess I, if they can still get approval for, like, could they still build the track? Or does that have to come back first? I guess is my question.
Yeah, absolutely. They could still start the project on the remainder of the site.
Okay.
And then, once this is finalized, they could come back and receive that final approval for it, and then they could start constructing that.
Okay. Yeah, no, that's what I guess I would prefer. I would like for a little bit of, if we can do neighborhood involvement out there, I, we've talked a little bit about this one, but I think being able to have that monument space be something that's public-facing and the public has buy-in to is important to me. So I guess I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Okay. That's the only thing on the floor at the moment, is the motion to amend, then. Councilmember, assuming Deputy Mayor Bulow, do you want to speak on that? Councilmember Flom, do you want to speak on that?
Not on the amendment.
The only thing I want to share on that, I've just, are we holding this applicant to a different standard than we would hold other applicants is my consideration on that one. In my time up here, I think if we've had amendments or something similar, I'm trying to think back, to me, I believe it's been staff maybe has reviewed those, and it hasn't had to come all the way back through the process. I completely understand it and appreciate why. I'm just wondering if we're, if it's a different standard that we're, we're holding them to, right or wrong? And so I'd be comfortable with staff reviewing that, quite honestly, myself, but that's just my thoughts on it. Councilmember Larson, who's sitting in a different button tonight, I got to make sure I don't call you Councilmember Nichols.
Oh, yeah, sorry about that.
And then, followed by Mr. Stevenson as well.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have the exact same concerns with that. I don't like, in general, when councils amend things that come before them. Joe, have you talked to anybody about this in advance? I mean, is the school board amenable to...
I don't know if the school board is, but I know if...
But I mean, is it? Okay. I mean, that's, I agree with the mayor on this one, that the process exists and is this for a reason, and I tend to, I like when things come to us fully formed and we can vote on it.
Councilmember Stevenson, back to you.
Yeah, I, to answer a question, I would say, yeah, this is abnormal. But I think with the school district being a public entity, that's why, and this building being of historical significance, and this monument being more public-facing, I'm treating them more how I would treat a city, I guess. I think we would come back through with a sought-after, an actual plan for this area. If it doesn't come back to council, I guess I'm indifferent if it comes back to council or not, but I, I would like the neighborhood to get some buy-in. I would like it to go through Plan Commission. I don't think, I don't want just a staff approval, I guess is where I'm getting it.
Well, I don't like the term split the difference.
Sure.
Would you like to split the difference on this one, if you, if we amended it to be that it goes back through Plan Commission instead of council? that it goes back through Plan Commission instead of council?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
So I will motion to amend. This is going to get fun. Motion to amend the amendment to, instead of going through city council, that it goes through Plan Commission for final SIP approval for the memorial space.
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment to the amendment? Here we go.
I'm sorry, who was my second? Thank you.
Councilmember Flom?
Yeah, I think that's what I'm looking for here, just an added layer of certainty with this. I understand that there may be some concerns about amendments on the floor and not having an idea fully flushed out, but I do agree with councilmember Stevenson about the fact that it's important that, you know, the neighborhood does get at least one more crack at commentary with, with city staff present about the specific site implementation plan regarding the monument itself. So that's my logic for this. I just think the neighborhood deserves one more opportunity to speak, and so I will be supporting the amendment, and I agree in, broadly speaking, that I don't think it needs to come back to council, but as long as Planning Commission has another opportunity, I'm okay with that.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Wessinger?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. So I just want to understand, so this will not be coming back to the council, or it will through the, after the Plan Commission reviews it?
The current-
It depends on how you vote on this motion.
The current amendment on the floor is that this would go back through the Plan Commission for their approval, and then that's where it would stop, that it would not need to come back to council for a final adjudication.
And what was the logic of that?
As we stated, holding the applicant to a different standard than others, at least that's the, that's how I felt. I felt it could have been handled maybe internally within staff. Councilmember Stevenson suggested council, and we split the difference.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but Lynn, we've, or maybe Kelly, we've approved site plans before without landscaping being completed or traffic, so I don't know how this would, I don't think we're treating anyone different here, are we?
That is correct. So this does meet code. Staff met this morning and discussed it. So what they have presented here would be fine. It meets our code. It is because it's an SIP, so all SIP GDPs do have to go through Plan Commission and council. So if there is an amendment to an SIP, technically, it does need to go back through Plan Commission and council. There is some, you know, determination of how big of an amendment is and should it go through. From staff's perspective, we are supportive of this. We understand there might be some changes with maybe what shipful will recommend, but what we see today, we are comfortable with.
Okay, well, then, so I guess I'm voting no on the mayor's amendment to the amendment because it seems as though we would be deviating from the rules and the procedures that we generally use, and I don't think that we should be doing that. And this is, councilmember Stevenson said this is a very public thing, and we're the ones that get elected, and it's our votes that should count, I think, on this. So I think this, if the Plan Commission wants to review it, I, I think that's a good, I think, good thing to do, but ultimately, I think that we need to be responsible for that.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion to amend? As a reminder, it's to have Plan Commission review the amended SIP for the memorial space only. So take the roll on the motion to amend as previously described.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
No.
Flom?
Aye.
Bulo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Kieried, five-one?
So back onto the floor is the motion as amended. Any discussion still on the motion as amended? If not, take a sec, another vote on the motion as amended. There still is one more vote to pass it, by the way.
Correct. Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
No.
Flom?
Aye.
Bulo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Kieried, five-one?
All right, so now we are on 24-518 as amended. Deputy mayor, followed by councilmember Flom.
Thank you. One of the things I wanted to make clear is actually push back a little bit that this space is only going to be used a couple months of the year or by a couple students, or these school playgrounds really do become community spaces for the whole neighborhood. I will tell you that right now, when I drive past Val Phillips in the morning, I see a lot of kids trying to play football before they open up, and they are trying not to run into other kids who are there playing soccer, who are there, you know, trying to get their schoolwork done at the last second before they go into class, and there really isn't a place for them to play and run before, after, or during school. I'll also say that our family specifically utilizes a lot of the neighborhood schools. My kids wanted to be the first ones to make a basket at the Newmanominee School. I don't know if they did it or not, but they're down there all the time playing basketball. And every year, actually, councilman Stevenson got to play with us last year, we do a ultimate frisbee tournament over at Emmeline Cook, and we specifically choose that location because there is a large green space right next to playground space for kids to be able to use, and that's always on Saturday.
I think I got the MVP award that day, Ray.
You did, you definitely did.
He's way better.
But every time that our family goes out and sees these schools, you know, on the weekends or during the summer, there's always kids out there playing and utilizing them as well. So to treat this as though it's only a resource for those kids, which it is, and it's needed, but that it's not a asset for the surrounding community and community at large, I think is doing the service to this specific project. So I'll be emphatically supporting this.
Councilmember Flom?
Thank you, mayor. I want to stand by my comments that I said at the last meeting, that the way that this entire process with just the fate of Merrill Middle School in general has been handled, I still stand by those comments. I think government listened to the people effectively on that. However, given that this is primarily a school board issue and this just comes with a, all we're doing here is approving a site plan for the future of the lot itself. It is still owned by the school district. The city can't do anything about that. So what I would encourage people at home to do is to, if they still feel very strongly about the school itself, is to talk to your school board members. I know that just sounds like a handoff, but this is still a school district property. And the other thing to kind of remind people at home is that, you know, while there have been discussions about what's been the future of this, of this site, it would require a TIF district from council in all likelihood. I know that there have been uses and ideas running around about apartments, but, you know, that does come with a cost to the taxpayer as well. So with this, I think my concerns largely have been satiated. I still have a couple of concerns about accessibility issues, but I think that can be hashed out. So I still stand by my comments that I said at the earlier meeting in regards to the fate of the school itself, but this isn't necessarily about the school building in itself, it's about the future of the site. So with that, I will be yes.
Any other comments? Councilmember Bulo, or excuse me, deputy mayor Bulo took one of my, my things I wanted to say. Within the central city, we are limited, in fact, we're deficient on park space, green space, or community gathering space. We are. It's a fact. Neighborhood schools are community gathering places. They're places where, you know, parent or guardian goes and throws a ball with, with one of their kids. It's a place where the kids on a Saturday afternoon or before school or after school are throwing a ball around. It could be, in this case, especially that area, there's some significant traffic concerns in that area. It's a little difficult to cross the street at certain times of the day. If somebody with some mobility issues or, or transportation concerns wants to use a track, you know, on a weekend when it's to walk around and get some exercise, these are all good things that now become accessible to that surrounding community, to that central city not too far from here. Six acres of space that welcome the entire community in. In terms of accessibility, I know some questions, I think councilmember Stevenson had had at one point, where, you know, is this going to be fenced in? Is this going to be, you know, basically locked tight? That's not the case. This is open to the community. It's, it's, it is a neighborhood gathering space, and I'm excited to see what it turns out to be there. It's got my emphatic support, and it sounds like the rest of council is, is pretty close there, too. So if, if you'll take the roll on 24-526 as amended.
As amended. Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
No.
Flom?
Aye.
Bulo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Kieried, five-one?
Excellent. Onto the next agenda item, Resolution 24-527, adopt 2024 City of Oshkosh Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan. Plan Commission recommends approval, as well as Advisory Park Board recommends approval. I don't have anyone registered to speak on this. I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Director Maurer? You got it for a reason, so, well, if you'd like to at least give those here and those at home a, a quick hit on what we're doing here tonight.
Sure. This is a process that we, the city goes through every five years or so. What we have to do is update our comprehensive outdoor recreation plan, in short, is our corp, and what that encompasses is the entire city park system, really gives us a roadmap as a city, what we're looking to do in the future, five years, 10 years down the road. What this document does is it makes us eligible for grant funding, typically through the DNR, federal grants and so forth. So it's an important document for the city. Process-wise, it is something that the Advisory Parks Board has been working on and city staff since back in October. We had a kickoff meeting in October with Rutler Corporation, our consultant that has helped us on this document as well as the last couple of documents. We had site visits to every park in October with the consultant. During March, from March 4th to March 31st, there was online community survey through our Poco survey tool that we had out to the community. February 12th, Advisory Parks Board met, had a presentation and availability for public present, for public input. In March, we had an internal park staff meeting with the consultant, so our field staff could give their input as well. May 13th, again, it was at the Advisory Parks Board, presentation, opportunity for public input. August 12th, Advisory Parks Board, presentation, public input opportunity, and at that meeting, the Advisory Parks Board did recommend unanimously for adoption of the plan. September 17th, Plan Commission presentation, again, opportunity for public input, and at that meeting, the Plan Commission recommended approval of the plan as well. So we're here tonight at the council level for you to approve and adopt the plan. I do want to remind the council and citizens that in the document, you'll see that a lot of our community parks aren't noted in here for those improvements. The community parks, we really do a separate master plan for each of those parks, and all of those plans, as well as the corp, is located on the city website under the Parks Department. Go down the left-hand side, you'll see park plans, and you'll see every one of our community parks that has a master plan, as well as the Menominee Park Zoo. So even though in this 200-some-page document, there's about roughly $7 million in improvements that we're looking at over the next five to 15 years or so, there's other master plans such as Lake Shore Park, Menominee Park, South Park, Rainbow Park, all of those documents have a cost associated. So I just want you to be aware that they may not be highlighted in this document, but there are plans out there for a lot of those community parks as well.
Excellent. Councilmember Flom, followed by councilmember Larson.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, Ray, to your staff, yourself, and the Advisory Parks Board for really working on this plan. I think it's a great investment in, and a plan to follow for the city for, for our park system. A lot of people will judge where they move based off of two or three things, and parks are up there along with schools and roads. So this is something that I think is really a good step in the right direction. We look at, and I would encourage everybody, especially people at home, to take a look at the types of parks that we have in the city and the classifications on them. We have mini parks, neighborhood parks, community parks, waterfronts, special use, natural resource areas. You know, it's, when you think of the park system, it's just so much more than the big ones that you think of, Menominee Park, South Park, and what have you. So there are a lot of really great community assets here. We talked about parkland earlier. I think we do lack green space in the central city, so looking at that, potential new acquisition areas for parkland is something I'm interested in as well. And again, I just want to say thank you for all the work that you've put into this, and I'm excited to adopt it. Thanks.
Councilmember Larson, followed by councilmember Stevenson.
I was going to say mainly the same thing. If you're watching at home and you haven't read this yet, it's linked as you go to the agenda to read through this. It's an impressive document. It's really cool to see all the parks. You did a great job with it. You know what my next take will be? I read the whole thing, and I was so pleased. There are two mentions of dog parks in it, so I'm ready for it. Anytime you are.
We are, in the past, in our prior corps, we had considered possibly a dog park at Quarry Park. Quarry Park being an old landfill area, the limited uses and so forth. In our consultations with our consultants that helped us out on those projects, as well as the DNR, we're, we're not going to be driving posts into that site. And so we are not looking at Quarry Park as being a dog park any longer, so that's not in here. But there has been a request from a number of people, especially downtown in the area, with a lot of the more residential focusing on the downtown, to possibly look at some type of a downtown urban dog park. We're open to that idea. We've been talking with planning staff with some of the downtown redevelopment, including that area going, you know, towards the, the downtown YMCA, some opportunities there. So it is in the document. It does state in there. Let's take a look at it. Typically, the dog parks are mainly county facilities because they do require larger parcels of property. Otherwise, they will get trampled and beat up pretty well, and a lot of maintenance for us if it's not a larger site. But there are a number of communities that are looking at those smaller urban parks for the dogs, and so it's something that is in the document, and we'll take a look at it and work through some criteria for those sites.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yeah, I would echo what my fellow council members have said. I'm a big plan guy, glad we put plans together. I think this is one of the few plans that probably we're going to make money off of because we'll be able to apply for all those grants. But, yeah, so thank you for putting this together. I'm going to echo a little bit of what councilmember Flom said. I'm glad there's a map in there to kind of show our deficits in parkland. Oshkosh, I think, by and large, has amazing parks. I think we're one of the best park locations in the state, but obviously can continue to improve. I'm from the central city. We do lack parks there, but there's other areas in our community that do as well, so I'm glad that map was highlighted to just kind of show if there is an opportunity that arises, we can certainly jump on it. So thanks again for you, your staff here, the consultants for putting this together.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, city clerk, please take the roll on 24-527.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Bulo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Kieried, six?
Resolution 24-528, approve budget amendment and appropriate ARPA funds for specific 2024 infrastructure projects. I don't have anyone registered on this one. I'll take a motion in a second, please.
So moved, second.
Discussion. Ms. Combs?
You could have just called for the vote.
Well, I could have, but she stood up. She saw me look back there. So we're, we're moving some, some funding around. I made a comment earlier this evening about health insurance helping us on the next budget. Some things you're doing in here are going to help us on the budget we're going to look at in a couple weeks as well. Want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, as promised earlier this summer, finance has worked with all the different departments on previously approved ARPA projects, figured out which ones came in under budget, figured out which ones came in over budget, figured out which ones just due to time constraints will not be able to be obligated by December 31st of 2024. So this is to remove those budget allocations or adjust the budget allocations for those projects that were previously approved, but then it is also to reallocate or appropriate just over $1.5 million of projects. What we did, we worked with city manager Rudolph on this, and we really looked at items that were in the CIP for 2025 that would have been funded by tax levy, talked with the departments. If they thought they could obligate it by December 31st, 2024, we moved the funding to ARPA. During budget discussions these last two weeks, projects that they were recommending go in the 2025 operating budget. Again, we asked, can we be obligated by December 31st, 2024? If so, we moved it to ARPA. So really trying to take advantage of allocating projects that were going to be proposed either way and using ARPA as the funding source if possible.
It's a, it's a great way to use the funds. If councils keep in tally, that's almost $300,000 removed from the tax levy, the proposed tax levy. In a couple weeks, when we take a look at that, appreciate the efforts on that. We're, you're obviously, you're hearing our message in terms of, of the budget and how We're, you're obviously, you're hearing our message in terms of the budget and how tight it is, and we understand it, and we appreciate staffs looking at that and trying to be as creative as possible. So appreciate you doing that.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? If not, take the roll on 24-528.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flum.
Aye.
Bulo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution 24-529, approve issuance of combination Class B beer liquor license to begonias. I have no one registered to speak on this, so I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved second.
Discussion on this. I see none. Take the roll on 24-529.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flum.
Aye.
Bulo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried six.
Next up, 24-530, approve general development plan and specific limitation plan for a mixed-use development on the east side of the 600 block of North Main Street and the west side of 600 block of Jefferson Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. I have no one registered to speak on this one.
So moved second.
Discussion. I see none. Take the roll.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flum.
Aye.
Bulo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Present.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried five, one present.
Next up, we have actually the last action item of the evening, approve, this is Resolution 24-531, approved tid number 29, TIF development agreement and lease agreement with Boatworks LLC. I do have Mr. Hess, as well as Mr. Wiesenberg, both registered to speak. One or both of you, come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. I think we're just here to answer any questions if you guys have anything, so.
I'll put it on the floor, then. I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved second.
Did you get those? Deputy Mayor, yours first.
All right. DEI Committee last night, Lou Sheer, working with the county, came and presented on the current status of housing in Winnebago County and as that relates to Oshkosh. And not to a surprise to most people that are in development, we're not only still behind, actually, within the last four or five years, we've fallen behind her. So with the previous action item that we took and this one, really addressing the workforce housing specifically, the 80% to 120% of median income, I think are essential projects to make sure that we can continue to provide homes for our citizens. Had just a couple quick questions, it can be you, it can be Kelly, on this. One of the conditions on this is that it, that we're going to commit to maintaining the rents at the workforce housing. How is that nailed down? I trust you guys, but like, how does that work in the agreement?
Absolutely. We actually have this clause in some of our other development agreements. So annually, we will request the rental information from the developers, and we will look at our current median family income and, you know, calculate that to ensure that they are within that 80% to 120%.
Awesome. And then the other thing that stood out to me was the timeline, that pursue the completion of the project by 2027, June, middle of 2027. I know that when I talked to you guys, you wanted to be slightly more aggressive. What is your hope for the first person to move in and the last person to move into that property, the 56 units?
Our hope was for June of '25.
June of '25. That's what I, that's what I was hoping that you were gonna say today, too. Awesome. I yield.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yeah, I'll echo a lot of what Deputy Mayor Bulo has said. I'm really excited for this project, and I'm glad we're building more housing. Housing's a huge need in our city. It is everywhere. But specifically happy that you guys are looking at that workforce housing. Again, that is that 80% to 120% of median income. Those are just regular people, right? I mean, I think sometimes this board gets a little bit of flack for, oh, no, we're only targeting low income, we're only targeting high income. But in this specific instance, you guys are really targeting just the guy that lives in Extordia, right? So I think that's, it's gonna be great. Thank you for doing this, so.
I just have one question. Shovel in the ground hopefully soon. Another hopeful?
We have our state approved plans, we have everything submitted for building permit, and we're ready to pull up with, get started as soon as our financing requirements are moved. That's waiting on developers.
Sounds good. Well, no, I know we've talked about, chatted about this one, this project, a couple times over the years. I'm glad to see where it's at right now. I'm glad to see that you guys are ready to put a shovel in the ground very soon. And actually, in the council member's statements, excited to see more units going up, going up in that space, and wish the project nothing but good weather and good supply chain, so. If there's nothing else, we'll take the roll on 24-531.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flum.
Aye.
Bulo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried six.
That concludes the action items for tonight. Now we move on to council discussion, direction to City Manager, as well as future agenda There's nothing under discussion, direction to City Manager, unless somebody else has something, so we'll move to future agenda items and workshops. Workshop on Underground Utilities is still scheduled for October 22nd, 5:00 p.m. That's pre-council meeting.
Yep. Happy to report that I received a draft of the document the council has to receive in advance. So within a week or so, I think you'll get it. You'll have it at least, at least one week in advance of the workshop, and I know that was something that the council was interested in. So I appreciate the work Mr. Robby and his staff have put in.
No.
But making a few little tweaks.
No, we appreciate that. Allows us to even ask some questions in advance and further discussion while we meet that night, so thank you for that. As well as in-meeting that night, October 22nd, we'll have a presentation from the Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Corporation. They'll probably hopefully be chatting on capital catalyst and the revolving loan fund statuses and those types of things. Excellent. Any other future agenda items that council members want to chat about? I see none. We'll move on to announcements and statements. I have one. Jake, if you wouldn't mind throwing that graphic up for me, a brief update for, well, we did have people in the room. For those in the room, those listening at home, this may be on replay. We are, unless you've been living under a rock, we're in the process of going through a City Manager recruitment. Got about 100 days left, but who's counting? There's probably one person counting up here. But we've got about 100 days left before the City Manager officially retires, but we're in the middle of our process. We're at the beginning stages. Wanted to give an update to council, as well as to the public on this. This is a calendar that our consultant provided to council a little bit back, and we are on track. Current status, our consultant has met with all of council, senior staff, to gather input on establishing our candidate profile. Has also completed the first round of community outreach to different organizations within the community that we are partners with, not even routinely, but that we are strong partners with, such as the Chamber, Go EDC, Ashken Community Foundation, School District, UWO, a good list of different organizations that we are strategic partners with. That's, that process has been completed as well. And currently, a Polco survey is out to the public right now. It's open. We want your feedback. I know council's done a pretty good job of making sure they're sharing it out on their social platforms. City Hall has done as well, and enlisting the help of large groups within the community. I know the Chamber, Go EDC, Go HNI, they're all gonna make sure that their membership is sharing, that they're sharing that survey out to their membership to try to make sure we get a great cross-section of responses. And if there's another group or entity that any council member sees fit, please share that link with them. Please encourage them to get that out to their membership to give us some responses. Our consultant right now is prepping the recruitment profile. So basically, that's the job posting. That's the job description. As soon as that's in a good shape, that'll be shared out to all council members for some brief feedback before that goes officially live. Our hope is by, it looks like the third week in October, to have resumes be turned in from the applicants, for then our consultant to start working through the process of filtering those and moving us forward. So from here until about probably early November, early to mid-November, right around the presidential election time, right around our budget approval time, may not be hearing too much, but then right about that time is when our process, especially for us seven up here, and the community engagement part will take off right around then. So again, the community engagement, there'll be some good opportunities. We're chatting through that, and we'll have a plan out to council as well for those, when we're bringing folks in, the interaction, how it'll look, that type of stuff, so. Councilmember, excuse me, Deputy Mayor, you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to touch base on the Polco survey that's going out, because we've gotten a lot of responses, and you have been heard, the community, about the hindrance to have to log in to take that Polco survey. We have, all of us, I believe, have blasted Fitz and other people with the question. And unfortunately, and Fitz is coming up, so I'll let him talk to it.
Not too long, though.
Yeah, exactly. Well, he didn't talk last time, so. But, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it really is a requirement, only because if we don't, because of the world that we live in, it's going to get hacked by bots, and the information that we receive is gonna be basically useless. So if you wanna fill in the blanks that I left for you.
No, I think you did a pretty good job with that. I think, you know, there is a guest function. We do, when we use Polco, we look at each individual survey on a case-by-case basis. And we actually look back this past 12 months, and I think we had eight surveys. I think five of them, we used the guest function, where people don't have to register. But if we're looking for specific information, we don't enable the guest function, which means people don't provide their email address. But when we're looking for specific information that's just related to the city proper, we don't, we wanna have people register with their email, so we can get that information specifically from people who are living in the city, who may, you know, not feel passionate enough to stuff the ballot box, so to speak. So there's all good reasons for that. And in addition to that, Polco prides itself on privacy, privacy of the respondents. So there's no information that's shared with the city officials about the individuals who are responding at all. And as a matter of fact, when we, when we have low response rates from different people in different parts of the city, they're even hesitant to use that information because they're concerned about self-identification that way. So they're very, very, they err on the side of the respondent's privacy.
Councilmember Stevenson, and then I got a comment or two on that.
Yeah. Sure. Nothing really related to being able to log in or not, but as part of my job, I go around kind of north-central part of Wisconsin. I visit a lot of communities. We do a lot of surveying stuff. Oshkosh is one of probably the best surveying communities out. I think we ask a lot of questions. I haven't seen many other communities that puts out the amount of surveys that Oshkosh does, that asks the amount of input that citizens, for their citizens. I think it's just a point I want to make, because we often get flack for not being transparent or not asking citizens, but I think a lot of people don't go to a lot of other cities and see this type of interaction. We, Oshkosh definitely does. Oshkosh puts out a lot of surveys. We ask our community for feedback, and I think that's great, so.
I appreciate you saying that, and I think that we've had a pretty consistent history where elected officials, you know, want us to do that, so they can get all the best information they can. It's not just the loudest people that show up at the meeting or send you the most emails. It really is a way to try to help elected officials make the best decisions possible.
Through this process, I know lots of good questions were asked by council members, and a lot of those may have been conveyed from the public. Appreciate those, in terms of, you know, why are we doing it this way? Why is the guest function turned off? Mr. Fitzpatrick touched on it pretty good there. Polco runs a very professional survey. This isn't, not to make light of anything, but this isn't a Survey Monkey where we're throwing in our responses to, so who's bringing what to the next potluck or anything like that, or we're picking a date for the next, you know, class reunion. They run a professional survey that's trying to get accurate data to the decision-makers, and that's what we want. We want as great of information as possible. As Mr. Fitzpatrick mentioned, we won't see any of the behind-the-scenes personal data. This is responses only.
Right.
And we want as many of those as possible, as I was mentioning, so. But do appreciate that there is concerns within the public about access. I understand that. You know, for myself, I think it's a modest amount of, it's a reasonable amount of inconvenience for us to get that information. I know that's a, that's for every person to decide what's reasonable, but I think it's, we're doing it right, and with that, Councilmember Flum.
Okay, I just want to clarify one thing quick. The Polco login does not apply to the parking survey, as if I'm correct on that point.
The Polco, or the parking survey does have a login requirement.
Okay.
And the reason it has a login requirement, just as we were talking generally, is because when we, we talk extensively with the departments that are establishing the survey, and also for each survey, we consult with Polco on the questions, the structure, to make sure that it's valid, all kinds of different considerations. And in the, in the case of the parking survey, I think council has talked about this quite a bit publicly, you know, there are a variety of different unique areas in Oshkosh. The university area has some unique challenges associated with parking. Downtown has some unique challenges. People that live on the west side, you know, on the outskirts of town, they might have a different thought about what's the appropriate kind of parking in their neighborhood. So in order to try to get information from different areas of the city, so we can, so the council members can make the best decision possible about what is gonna be appropriate for whatever kind of parking, policy guidelines that are gonna be established, it was determined that they need to see this information from those, so we can identify specific areas and opinions from specific areas. With the guest function, we could have a whole variety of opinions that wouldn't allow us to look at the different regional areas where those opinions come from.
Okay.
So that's the purpose.
Right. And that's good. I understand that. I appreciate that.
Yep.
And I think that's the right decision to make. There must've been a technical issue on my end, because when I did the parking survey a couple days ago, it didn't require me to log in, so I just wanted to make sure that that has been clarified, so that residents know. And I just used it from my own mobile phone.
Right.
If you're already logged in, it won't require you to do it again, yeah.
So my bad. Didn't want to give out the wrong information, so I appreciate that. Thanks.
No, thank you.
I thought Fitz would tell you one thing. Andy Radag, our communications coordinator, said this is the, we've set a new record on number of responses with the parking survey, not the City Manager's survey. I didn't expect that.
Not yet.
To Councilmember Stevenson's point, every time we set a new record, what that also means is we have more citizens signed up and that are part of, they'll get an email saying, we have a new survey, we have a new survey. So it, Polco likes to refer it to itself, not as a survey tool, but as a citizen engagement tool. And I think that the parking study, or the parking survey, is really a great way to get more people engaged. So hopefully, that will improve for subsequent surveys that we do to get more citizen engagement.
That's it for me on the update for that process. Council, if you have questions along the way, don't hesitate to reach out to myself or our consultant, Lee, and any of us would be happy to address those. Any other council members' announcements or statements? Councilmember Flum?
I do. I have an event here that the public may be interested in. Thursday, we are going to have, the City Landmarks Commission is going to have a plaque unveiling at, let's see, it was currently is Jambalaya, which is 413 North Main Street. It was the home of famous industrial photographer Louis Heine. So there will be a proclamation from the Governor's Office present as well. Then the Oshkosh Landmarks Commission will hand over a plaque, and then a following reception also. So we want to thank the Landmarks Commission for their research in this and for the State Historical Society as well.
Very nice. There's no other announcements or statements? City Manager, the rest is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder or just a notification, the Transportation Committee is going to be having a, the electric vehicle readiness plan on their committee agenda on October 10th. We thought we would simply make invitation available, and we'll notice the meeting if you want to attend it and learn a little bit more about what our EV charging readiness plan is and what it entails and plans we have for the future. So certainly welcome you to attend. It's October 10th at 4 o'clock, if you can make it. We're gonna notice it, so don't worry, you can just, you can just come to the meeting. I do have an update of outstanding issues. Happy to answer any questions that you might have about that. And since I'm just doing announcements and statements, I know over the last couple of days, there's been this, you know, a lot of questions about this smell and not smell and everything. I think it's a, excuse me, a good opportunity to kind of give some general information out. Whenever something like this occurs, this is important and we, we do need and want to know about these things, especially when it's in that vicinity. I can tell you, we haven't identified the source of this yet, but Mr. Robby and his staff have actually been aware of this for a couple of weeks. So they regularly work on something when they get a complaint about an odor because it could very well have something to do with our sewer system. And staff and our, a lot of people don't know this, our largest interceptor sewer in the city is on Eighth Avenue. So especially when we hear about it in that vicinity, we take it very seriously because we want to make sure from a public safety standpoint that we've got everything covered. James is, and I hope I'm doing justice to everything James briefed me on, but we have, we have a device called a four gas, you know, testing device, and it tests for four things. It tests for hydrogen sulfide, which is your typical sewer gas. It tests for methane, and there's a lot of reasons for that because methane can all, it can travel in the sewer pipe, it can travel outside the sewer pipe, along the channel where the sewer pipe is. So we want to make sure that we're keeping an eye on that. It checks for carbon dioxide and it actually checks for oxygen. The idea behind it is we want to make sure if there are any problems, that we are addressing it, whether it's at, in our sewer system where we need to flush things out. So while there were some comments, oh, the city doesn't care, the city doesn't, it's like quite the opposite. We care deeply and take this very seriously. The more calls we get, the better, but I, I would encourage people, if you have a genuine, you know, odor issue, please let us know because what that'll help us do is narrow it down. Without this information, we can't plot your data point into it. So please let us know. And I know the sewer treatment plan, the Department of Public Works, is actively interested in hearing from folks.